I thought maybe they were exaggerating. I thought maybe they were exaggerating, but they are not. Fifteen and sixteen, and it's right by the telephone and there should be a cone in the hot water. But it's pretty bad.
What are you talking, a foot deep?
Probably there's a cone in it, but the cone is leaned over and like only see like this part of a bunch of.
Oh, okay.
And it's right by the telephone pole, you know, behind the um community center. It's just past that and uh I drove by and stopped and looked at it and it's. And they said they thought it might have been like somebody was doing something with fiber optic or something, but it's gotten big.
Yeah, you know, I think Lumen uh was doing something back there.
Mayor Jeremy is online, uh but he just logged into the meeting.
Okay.
So I thought I better pass that along.
I will get to, thank you.
There's a lot that happens in that.
Sorry, I'm I'm kind of in a place to move.
I thought you were gonna stand beside too, because I feel like we've been all sitting on the side.
Yeah, where's Kate? She not coming tonight?
Uh, I'm not aware of her. She's not able to make it tonight. Uh, Emma Jeremy being online, we we have a forum. Um, so, because we have so many items to cover, I'll I'll make sure we kick us off right at five thirty.
Yeah, we do have a lot to cover tonight.
I love my hair. Got a minute? Have you heard him walking downstairs? Scott likes to plug into.
Did you hear your light?
Oh, my style, I guess.
Yeah, I never want one of them. No, that's not good.
Well, we all have two side.
Yeah, well, one of them is painful. Very painful.
Hey, right on time.
Talking about you.
What 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 were we saying?
Trash, whatever.
What else? Mr. Stolinski was talking about me.
So Jonathan, we're good, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hey, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. City of Idaho Springs uh work session. And uh we have quite a number of topics tonight, uh six items actually, and we're gonna start off with uh. Tommy Knocker tent proposal and Steve, uh welcome. Yes, please.
Mayor Council, the quarter, Steve talked about his specific request. I just, it's in my staff report, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of background here. We, when the pandemic started, had give in every business in town, really, not just on Minor Street. The ability to get an encroachment agreement for outdoor space. That still stands today, but most of the businesses that use it are on Minor Street. When we did that, we worked with the fire authority and P D and public works to make sure that we had a passable avenue, basically. In the street so that people could get through the street safely and we get fire trucks and police in there and everything that we might need. Um, that's worked pretty well for the last four years. And Steve has a request right now to change it up a little bit at his business. And the reason that we're bringing this forward is because. The the senior center on the other head of the street doesn't actually use their space. They're actually okay with this agreement too, and they've already talked to, Steve's already talked to Creek Fire about this. And has some, um, I think it's a pretty good um results from that conversation. So I think Steve, I'll just let you kind of take over and kind of talk about what you want to do and.
Yeah, we're looking at getting a twenty by forty tent, standard sizes ten by tens that would line up within the twelve foot uh encroachment area. The eight foot tent or the twenty foot tent would go eight feet over the encroachment. But it would still be a line of sight and did you get this map? So there's still eighteen feet of passable um pathway for any kind of EMS vehicles or walking. One of the reasons for doing that is something different. We're trying to come up with a look this year that's. Something a little bit different and it's also, we can use it for events like the Furlings Fest or other things like that we can do under this tent. Um, the other concept was putting it up against the building, which doesn't work for us. The pedestrians can go under it, but there's no advantage for the business doing it because you can't seat there because the sidewalk's there. Um, the other thing I'll say is for events like parades or when there needs to be a clear path straight. It's pretty easy for us to pick the tent up and move it against the building and then it's inside the twelve foot car.
So, um, and you've already talked to Creek Fire, correct? And so one of the reasons, the other reasons about this is that we're having a the summer kickoff event that you heard about from C E L, our last meeting. Is called Furlings Fest this year and basically events that play on the German word frühling, which is spring. It's a uh traditional festival in Germany where there's a certain kind of beer that you drink. And it's just a celebration of of springtime. And so we were thinking that this is going to be an event that like does some dog adoptions and is dog friendly and then. It's gonna support Casa and Charlie's Place and some organizations like that. And so we can probably get a tent on that day, but it would be better and more cost effective long term to have the tent for the whole summer for you guys. Essentially, and we think that the safety, there there's really not a, uh, and I guess um. We can talk about that further, but it doesn't seem like there's really a safety reason not to do it. It can be, it can be accommodated, all the things that we needed to accommodate. And they do have the sign up from the the senior center already who doesn't use the space on the other side of the street. So it wouldn't in actuality be any bigger. It'd actually be maybe even slightly. Less space than if both businesses had encroachment areas on both sides of the street. And there's very few spaces along the street on Minor Street where this could actually happen, where. You could, you could combine them both uses on both sides of the street. And I think that's what we would say is if a business wanted to do that. You have to be able to do it safely through fire and have concurrence of the businesses around you and so forth.
So you would probably, you would put it on the other, like, let's just say this, this might open up a door for other people to ask the same thing. You would require them to go to the fire authority and before they came to council and have all these approvals done?
Yes.
As well as a sign off from their neighbors.
Yes, they'd have to have a, and that's required now. We allow you to use. Area in front of another business as long as they give you a letter that says it, but it's been linear before, so this would be just growing it widthwise. And so I think that probably that would just continue that same practice, that you'd have to have that sign off.
What if both businesses on either side wanted it at the same time? You're saying that's not possible?
We, we couldn't do that because we'd still have to have access across.
So how would you decide which one?
Well, they can both still qualify for their encroachment area. So if, what this would be is if they had an agreement like where, like this, where the senior center said, hey, we're not using our space and we don't mind if. Your space is wider and you can safely do it. Then it would be okay, but if both businesses want to use your space, they'd still be able to get the encroachment area that they are entitled to through the current program. This would just be like a special circumstance for businesses that that have the ability to do this in a safe way with the concurrence of their neighbors.
All right, um, anything uh further from council?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because I knew somebody else that was on everybody's mind. If we allow one person to do something, we're gonna be asked, possibly be asked by another person.
Right, yeah.
Opens that up for that.
And I'm usually against setting precedents like that, but I think that Steve is working with the downtown. Rest of the the neighbors that well enough that you probably have a good handle on who might want to do it. And so I'm sure you'll help the conversation to help kind of true, outweigh any of that discontent that might occur.
Well, I think, I think if we have specific guidelines, like these are the things that I would be concerned about, like are your neighbors gonna be angry? You know, are you taking something away from your neighbors or can we get? You know, can we get the ambulance through if we need it to? Like, those are my issues. If you and your neighbors come to an agreement and the fire department says it's okay, like. It's open for everyone.
Yeah, but I think you made a very valid point. We do need to set some guidelines on this.
Oh, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with this without guidelines, like. I think anytime you make a change like this, there have to be guidelines so that everyone can apply to within the guidelines.
And you couldn't say a first come, first served, just like with anything in our town, you know, whether it's a short term rental.
I like that, actually, too.
You know, first comes first served, and and again, businesses will change and that's over the years, but. Um, I mean, I'm sure we can be flexible with those changes.
So the reason he's getting this variance is because of the neighbors, you say? Because it looks like it comes out from his side of the street.
Well, he can. So this is, so when we first set this up, the other thing that that is a little antiquated about what we're doing right now. Is that when we set this up, we didn't have the C O D A, which is the common outdoor consumption area. Which means that Steve essentially shares my street as a premise with all the other liquor holding, liquor license holding entities on the street. So we have created premises that are that are within that twelve foot encroachment area, but it's not actually. Steve can actually expand that encroachment area legally with his liquor sales without actually having to do like a full modification of premise. And so I think that what Steve is trying to do is bring this new element to the street. And the other thing is, is like when we get rain over there on that side of the street, it's, it becomes difficult. To manage. So having another covered area is probably not a terrible idea. And when they first started having this conversation, the really the critical thing was, can we still get emergency services through there? When we saw that it did, it really becomes like this policy question. And so I think what we want to do is preserve equity, make sure everybody has same opportunities, which is important, but I think in this case. It really impacts no one else because of the way that the the Tommy Knocker sits to the visitor center. And the way that the street is bucked out right in that area, it's, it's a really minimal impact on anybody else.
Yeah, I can see because you need that room on the other side of the street, right?
Yeah.
That's why it's, it's accepted by them, like not everybody has that same opportunity.
Right, and I I won't speak for Fire Thirty, but I believe that with the way the building is situated, that that's, the access isn't an issue, I believe. Well, yeah, Jeremy's online, just so everybody knows.
Are you okay setting some, like some type of guidelines for this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because I don't see any downfall for this. I mean, I think it's a good thing.
I think just have guidelines, it allows all the rest of the people on Minor Street to say, wow, if they're doing that, what could we do? Within the guidelines.
And Paul?
I'm not opposed to that, but I uh would like to make it, uh, if we're setting guidelines. That it's uh something that seasonal has to be started at the beginning. It's not something that uh. Where Tommy Knockers is expanding across the street and then later during the summer, the uh, the um. Uh, the thrift store wants to put up a, you know, some sort of uh display as well that would really impact and constrain that. So if they're giving up the space now, it's for the season.
And would this just run Minor Street or you said technically any business has this encroachment agreement?
Any business in the city can get it. So we did it, um, they don't do it anymore, but uh Smoking Yards did it for a little while. It's a little bit practically difficult on the east end, but there are businesses there that still do have encroachment areas. Um, one that that is like, comes to mind is like Hill Daddy's, the old Hill Daddy's restaurant. Actually has an encroachment agreement in front of the building as well. And we, that's something that every business can get for free. And we want to continue that. And basically, there are guidelines, this program, everybody is entitled to that, that twelve foot area all the time. Um, and you have to sign off for it. And if you get it in front of your neighbor, you have to get the signed letter. But I think we could probably get that from the visitor center for yours. And then in this case, what I would do is, I think it could function very much the same way that you have to have that sign off and that you have to have. We typically send review for anything that might have a health, safety, welfare kind of question about it to P D and fire. And public works usually on anything that involves like a street closure or anything similar to that. And that process could continue just how we practically do it with the city to make sure that that, that um. You know, that we meet those needs. So I think in terms of guidelines, if you guys wanted to add anything else to that, that would be totally acceptable. Um, one thing that we have been trying to do with the marketplace is to keep it evolving and to make sure it's nice. One of the things people like about the marketplace is that it's a little bit eclectic. But we also want to make sure that it doesn't become. You know, uh, and I think we saw that with winter this season is the winter operations are. Some years are fine, but some years they're just practically difficult. So we, we want to stop the winter time operations, which makes a lot of sense. By the summertime, if we can do things to keep people coming and keep it fresh. This also gives a really great place for community events potentially. We've talked about, I don't know what's these exact plans are, but. There's no reason that you couldn't have like a movie in there or like a comedy show or something like that, which could be a really community serving event. And so it just offers another space for those kinds of things to happen on the marketplace. Um, where sometimes it's, it's nice to have someplace that's at least a little bit inside to do that. So I think it could be a good experiment just to see how it works. And then, you know, as we grow, I think we're talking about a minor street. Projects, if the raise grant goes correctly, like in twenty twenty six, which might change the streetscape, which might mean that. Steve is doing something different at that point. So this is probably not a long term, at least this iteration of it wouldn't be a long term um thing.
Because we're not considering it long term, and if the the main street revitalization goes with the drawings I've seen. This then could go up against the building, like some of the drawings I've seen.
Yeah, that is, that's another good point. Isn't it, on the minor street um redevelopment, all the. The buildings have areas built into them on the plan for where outside dining could happen, or there could be a small outside shopping area. And it doesn't, um, it it's not like currently where that happens a little bit in the street, it's set away from the street and the sidewalk. So this um, this is kind of like getting, is moving towards that.
The sidewalk would be in the street.
Yeah.
And dining would be against the building kind of.
Was it permanent structures on the revitalization project?
The, the streetscape is, and then there would be areas, so there could potentially be like an awning or something, but that'd still have to be a C O A and all that kind of stuff, so. I think it's, we don't know for sure what's gonna happen when it happens.
All right, uh, anything further from council? Uh, Jeremy, I want to thank you for uh taking a look at this as well. And uh, all right, if there's no further questions, we will uh move on to the second item and Steve, thank you.
Really quickly, thank you. Yeah, would it, so as far as direction goes on this item, would you guys like to take action on it or is it okay for Steve to proceed here? Would you like us to bring back some?
Well, I, I think it's okay for Steve to proceed, but I would agree uh with Paul's last statement. Um, you know, I think we should let folks know that it's gonna be for the season. In this case, I I don't think that's gonna be any, any problem. Um, and uh, you know, to Lisa and Scott's point about uh precedence, we just wanna. You know, be even with everybody right now. If they don't have a neighbor across from them, they still have their twelve foot. And if they come to some agreement uh with a neighbor across from them, then they're, they could, you know, do something like this. I mean, just as long as it's fair.
Maybe I could write up a policy and bring it back for your consideration.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but I, I think for now, uh, I, I think uh the Tommy Knocker review, I think we should be good. Everybody in agreement with that.
Would this require us changing our code?
No.
It could be limited to just updating the encroachment agreement that we have with public workers.
Okay, but I would like it to be so that everybody knows, because you'll have questions. Um, everybody knows you have the same opportunity.
Yes. All right, uh, then we will move on to uh visitor center and historical society update. Jan, welcome, come on up.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. See you later. Hey.
Well, I guess it recently came to our attention. That uh the zoning in uh the visitor center area for thirty years.
Yes.
And we just picked up on it.
Right, nineteen ninety-two.
Uh, we are currently um zoned as parks and recreation. Because in the past, that was an old swimming pool that used to be used by the over turf motel, which was right across the street. And uh, then when we took over the building, uh, well, when we built the building. Nobody noticed the fact that we didn't change the zoning. So that's issue number one. We need to uh get that changed to uh commercial. Zoning. Uh, I don't know if, having been for thirty years, can be grandfathered in as such, or. Um, we will go, we're willing to go through the process to get it corrected.
And then the other issue is the lease, which only allows subleasing to public entities. And so it really limits the ability of the historical society to lease those spaces. So.
So what it, what, what does that mean? Because I know that there's been different businesses in there over the years.
It's been, it was, like Jan said, this is something that I think got overlooked a little bit, but essentially it was supposed to be. For like the tourism office or something like that, which did have.
And then the watershed was in there at one time, right? And then there was some masseuse in there.
Right, and and. Right, yeah, and uh, I know this goes way back and it is an nonprofit, but even Kato Reo was in there.
So this would, what we're proposing is a rezoning to see one to kind of align with the current future uses. Especially for that, that um rental space, just to make sure that they can rent it for any use that would be in that, that they would use it for essentially. Um, it's still have to comply to all the zoning of that district, which we have proposed C one, or Dylan proposed C one, because that's what's around there. And then um amending the lease. Now, the lease, we've talked about several times about. That lease probably needs to be completely reworked because it's getting to be a little long in the tooth. But what we need to do is, is change the, their, well, what we were asking for is consideration to allow them to sublease. To just private entities and persons um. And make all leases, basically say subleases are just subject to the city's prior written consent, which. Is basically what we do anyway, because they just come for their business license and we just make sure that whatever. You know, that there's not a change of use or anything that would require anything from a city perspective. So those were the two changes that we proposed this evening, and then we do need to look at. Probably um revisit that lease to make sure that it, it's just functioning the way it needs to.
Well, when, when somebody comes and gets a business permit, do the, is there an address associated with that?
Yes.
So you're going to say like that is an appropriate address for.
Correct.
That business, so that's still gonna continue on.
Yeah, typically what will happen is that comes a wonder and then she sends that to a planning and zoning review to whomever, like Dylan essentially. And that also goes to see if there's a change in occupancy. And for zoning, for planning and zoning, usually what we look at is, is. And for zoning, for planning and zoning, usually what we look at is is it allowed use in the zone district? Is there any changes that would mess with zoning? And they're supposed to submit a parking plan. Every business is supposed, unless there's like not a change of occupancy. And then Safe Bill typically looks at just if the. If there's like a life safety code issue or something like that, if there is a change of occupancy. So we do that on every new business license.
Well, with the lease, um this is amending the lease to allow the subleasing. If the business that is renting comes to you and is not in compliance to enforce that the city or the historical society?
That's what we had put in the. That's one of the things that we might want to talk about long term about how this works. We had suggested remain subject to the city's prior written consent. Which I think was getting towards that, but I think it's really the visitor center's lease. So I think what our role would be is just to make sure that it's an allowed use in that space and everything like that. You know, we might have an issue there, like if somebody wanted to put a marijuana dispensary with the other laws in this to be about marijuana dispensaries. Then that's the kind of thing that we probably want to check. But other than that, I think C one is a pretty, is one of our more open zone districts, ones allowed in that zone. But you know, there's the space requirements, it's not a huge space and things like that, so.
Is there a need for Carmen to be released or?
She has.
She does.
And and like I said, we'd want to look at this, the, one of the things of visitor center, I won't speak for Jan, but. We talked about having a longer term so that they feel a little bit more secure in that lease. And I think that's something everybody supports in general. And there's some other things in there, I think that we just want to make sure as clean as possible. Um but we were thinking that just to kind of correct the situation right now, it would be better. To amend this one issue with the public entities and to get the rezoning happening. And then we could go back and. And revisit the entire lease, which might just take a little bit of time to get through both forms and everything.
Does the city have uh liability insurance that's covered on that property since the city owns the building, right?
We carry it or just you all carry a policy, right?
I imagine the city carries it under SIRS.
Yeah.
And the historical society carries liability, of course.
Yeah, I think it needs to be carried with both entities because that leaves an open door.
Yeah, it seems to me that on leased properties, the insurance companies make out. The the owner has to carry his liability and then the leasing carries their liability so that that's.
Where does an insurance company not make out?
Person in a lawsuit because they sue both entities.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, I did have a question though um on this amendment. Uh under section one. I'm sorry, section two. Um the way it reads, maybe I'm not interpreting this correctly, but. Uh the second sentence says tenant will not assign all or any interest under this agreement. And then the fourth sentence says any subletting of space. Which seems to be in conflict the way that I'm reading it.
So I can address that, I'm just looking it up here. Um. So after we talked, Jan, I did follow up with our city attorney on that. And I thought he was gonna be here for this part of the meeting. I think he's coming to the regular part of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
It won't be Carmen and I, it'll be her associate.
Right, I saw he wasn't bringing back him.
But I did ask him about what we had talked about uh with the wording there and he says um. The new section twelve point one as amended uh limits subleasing and clarifies in the subleasing process. In the following manner, sentence by sentence breakdown below. And again, he's looking at it as an attorney, of course. Um point one, the property may not be sublet in any capacity unless the tenant. Receives a city's prior written consent, which may be withheld for any reason. Uh point two, subletting includes any and all uses of the property by any party that is not the tenant. Three, in the event the city permits subletting, the city will provide consent via written notice. So that's the way. You know, we had talked about the intent, you know, the wording sounded.
The wording just sounded to me like it was in one. They gave it to us in one and they took it the other way. So I just wanted that clarified.
Yeah, so and he will be here uh with my understanding for the regular meeting, so he could also speak to this as well. We want to get further clarification, but.
Okay.
That that is, it it meets the intent of what.
Right.
We desired, both the historical society and the city, I believe.
Well, we just wanted that cleared up because in the case that. The way it's written, it looks like it's a conflict.
Right.
And we want, we want it clear enough that if we did have any issue, which in thirty years, we haven't had any issues, so. I don't see why we would start having issues, but um.
It protects both parties. It protects, because the city owns the building, like Scott was saying, if there's two entities, two entities can be sued. This means that you guys can lease as you want, because normally I'd say, well, if they're leasing, they should be able to sublease if we allow subleasing, but if we own the building. That's a liability, you know, that we have to take on as well.
All right, um. Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say tonight, there's a little bit of an interesting process here, and I just wanted to explain why. You guys have the first reading of this ordinance for the lease and zoning changes tonight. And the reason that this is before planning commission, planning commission review. In this case can come after council review and we wanted to get the first reading on the books, because this was kind of an oversight for a long period of time and want to make sure we're not impacting. Operations at the visitor center. So we thought in this case, we could do the first reading of the ordinances tonight. Then we can go to planning commission on the third, which they're gonna hear all the rezoning things and um either make a recommendation or not on the. On the rezoning and then on the twenty second, then you guys can have that second reading, the hearing associated and. And we we keep them moving. It's the fastest way to keep them moving in this case.
All right. Uh anything further or any uh questions for Jan? All right, well, Jan, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh next up, we're gonna talk about uh sites and facilities update. Uh Phyllis, uh welcome.
Mayor and Council, Jan is actually probably. It's good that Jan's here too. Both Jan and Phyllis have some insight into this issue.
Oh, good.
We have been, we've had a sites and facilities committee for since two thousand and seven.
And and let me just add, uh John was out last week and this was inadvertently left out. Ready and it it's on me. Uh the the report uh did not um. Make it into the packet, electronic packets that you got, but you do have copies, paper copies at your uh places. And the documents that go with it that we're talking about were included in the packet. So really, Josh is gonna go do an overview of his. His staff report, which you have before you, um and then we can talk about this.
Yeah. So essentially, we've had a sites and facilities committee since two thousand and seven. Please. Yeah. It's um.
Hard to let you go that easily.
One of the very first such committees that existed kind of anywhere. And it's a really unique public-private partnership kind of thing between the historical society and the city. Built to manage the facilities owned by the city that are historic. Um and it's been uh, it's been a good committee. They've done a strategic plan several times that have helped us move forward on. Maintenance of our facilities. Um in twenty nineteen, we started looking at the agreement because a lot of what was in there wasn't really feasible for either organization. Um it wasn't really meeting the needs of what we needed at the time. And so we started looking at how we might make it better. And we had ultimately come up with an ordinance that was ready to be considered by city council, as well as an updated agreement. Um to continue the work of the committee. What we really needed to do was to make the committee official, like a real committee of the city, so it's subject to open meeting laws and makes it a little bit easier to provide staff support. Um and so we had kind of worked through that. We had worked through a a reasonable way for the historical society and the city to kind of interact on these properties and projects. Um once COVID nineteen happened, everything kind of stopped. The committee, I think, I believe, was appointed right around that time. And since then, those appointments have elapsed. And we're now in a situation where. We really need to think about how we want to manage sites and facilities as we move forward. There are several different possibilities about how we might do that. And I've been trying to think about ways that we might. Talk about what their responsibilities could be in the future. And I think there's a couple of things that are really important. One is the first thing that they have always done, and that is strategic capital planning. I think that this committee should be tasked with developing and overseeing a strategic capital plan for our sites and facilities. Which they've already done. This is something that I think last was done in twenty twenty seven, twenty nineteen. In that range, um we've completed a lot, a large part of the work that's actually on that strategic plan and it's time to update it. So I think that that is one of the things that they've done very effectively that we could continue. Another thing that I think they should be tasked with is the oversight of maintenance on our historic sites. The committee should ensure that all sites are maintained according to a set maintenance schedule and preservation best practices. Give you an example. Um if we have a like a facility like the library, which has a. An exterior feature that needs to be restored or renovated, we need to make sure that there's a body of the city that. That looks at whether or not the practice that'll be used to restore it are according to historic best practices. And so what I'm suggesting is is that they would oversee that maintenance and possibly have a compliance process. That's sort of similar to our certificate of appropriateness that we do for historic preservation of private properties. Um now we just ensure that any of that work complies with city and National Park Service standards, which is what we would do on any other historic property. I think we have a responsibility on our own properties to make sure that we're doing the same thing. Um the other things I think that they could do is probably participate in grant strategy. We have a couple of projects that likely will be more expensive, like if we decide to do the engine. Once the coach is done, that's gonna be something that we probably want to get grants for. There may be some other properties in the city. That we want to do that. And I think that they could be involved in that through time. So I think what what I am kind of, what we're looking for is a little bit of direction about. About how we might think about an ordinance that would. That would make this work official and create this committee or some group that would have this authority to kind of manage the historic preservation of. National historic sites owned by the city of Idaho Springs. And I think that that ultimately what I have is like three requests for direction for you. One is, should the agreement with historical society be renewed? Like I said, it's a longstanding agreement, although. In recent years, it's proven a little bit unpractical. I do think that like the collaborative nature of that agreement is something that's pretty valuable. And I think that it's worth con- considering whether that agreement should continue or whether we collaborate with the historical site in a different way. Um the second one is, can we establish this committee through an ordinance? So it's just like variance board or historic preservation committee. Or something similar. Another option might be worth considering is could HPRC take on the work of sites and facilities? I think in large part that might be difficult, given, given they're they're kind of two different jobs. But I think it's something that that could be discussed, but I think in. A lot of ways, it might make sense just to have a separate committee that just is managing these properties, because it's a little bit different work with the capital maintenance that needs to happen and. And just the strategic planning for these properties. And then finally, like what would the scope of work of a committee be like this if we want to continue um having a committee? The option, the other option would be, I don't, I don't think we'd ever like completely abandon these facilities from a historic preservation standpoint. But it would likely just be a staff duty. It wouldn't be as transparent as it would be if we had like a body that was just kind of tasked with doing it. So a few weeks ago, Phyllis has been involved in the sites and facilities committee for. A very long time and she's done a a good job shepherding it through some tough times. And as we were talking about this, we we thought, one of the things that we really need to do is get direction from council on these issues about how we want to move forward. Because we really need to, we need to get, if we're gonna create an ordinance, we need to get that done so we can reappoint the committee and start working on. Updating plans and and figure out, you know, their work load and all these schedules and kinds of things. And then if we're gonna do something else, you just need to figure out what that is. So I wanted to bring the staff report to you so that we could kind of look at what might be possible. And how how council might want to kind of tackle this, this task that we have that's related to these sites and facilities we own. Um if you guys aren't familiar with the one, I'm just like last thing, there's several facilities through the city. So there's the library, there's city hall, there's the Blue Ribbon Tunnel. Um there's a Steve Canyon statue, there's the canon.
Hose houses.
The hose houses. And yeah, the George Jackson monument.
Water wheel.
And the water wheel, yeah. Yeah, firehouse.
So let me, let me jump in and just say, okay, I I'm, this is kind of a little bit of a mystery to me. So right now, sites and facilities is tasked with. Making sure that all the historic sites underneath their purview are like up to speed, intact, being taken care of.
That's how it was envisioned and they created a plan to do that, but it's been, I I think.
I remember the plan. All that we can do is recommend. Okay. So we don't have the authority to say to Paul, you will take your crew out and fix this. Is this what, is this what we're trying to get? Is that we have a separate committee that says? That is. What we have, he's asking if you want it. No, no, what I'm, what I'm asking is, are we asking to create a body that instructs staff? To go out to one of these.
Part, well, what I would like to do is create a body that creates a plan so that we actually have a capital plan for where we're putting these dollars. But also that when it comes to maintenance, that there's oversight from a historic perspective. Because what could happen very easily is is a work might need to get done through the best intentions and we do it. But in so doing, we destroy part of the historic fabric of the building. And so we need to do something to make sure that when we do work on a historic site or facility or a pertinence like they, like whatever. That what we're doing complies to National Park Service standards. Because it's not just maintenance on a regular building. These are special things and we gotta do it the right way.
Well, and I can just bring this up and those who might be interested is that right now, the library is actually having. Uh issues on the inside. And so that's where I'm kind of going with this is that. If there's more hurdles to get to.
Oh, it, it would probably be just external and I wouldn't see it.
Internal.
Yeah, internal stuff we don't regulate on anything.
It's because it's external that it's internal.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is it, how many, how many committees?
We need to.
You have to go through to get.
There's no, there's no point to having a historic building if you're not gonna preserve it. And so we need to have a process that makes sure that we're not, we're not doing something that. That erases that history. That's what I'm after.
So I'm just gonna say, I think that this is, cause I've been on HPRC for four years now and I know that this is because the library was what? Seven years to get this done? Or just the stuff that just got finished?
Right.
It was a seven year process. So I think that's where you're coming from with this.
Well, I wanna.
We don't want to increase that seven year process.
Well, I don't want it to take forever to get to the 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 fixing of, you know, of a building. So I, and what I'm saying is that. So if sites and facilities is overseeing and their recommendation is they come to you and they say, we need to fix this building. And then it's another step. And then there's another step because we have to have HPRC involved to make sure that it's done correctly. According to state statutes. Now we're, I don't know how far away we are from actually slapping the paint on the job.
I just want to hear uh what Phyllis has to say and then uh we'll go to Paul after that.
Um when we did the library, since that's come up as the example, we had to go to HPRC. For when we did the exterior, we of course did not when we did the interior part of it. Um I don't think it delayed anything. What took a long time was the architects drawing everything out. That can't be helped and and now whatever the problem is that you're experiencing now. I can't imagine would be as complicated as the whole exterior and putting on that elevator and and the whole thing was. So to the simple answer, if I can, the simple answer to your question, how many? There are two. Sites and facilities overseas. HPRC approves the D J. We still have to go to HPRC. Or these projects have to go to HPRC when they involve the exterior. Of a building that's owned by the city, just as your house, if it were designated or one of the buildings down downward, so.
Also in the current agreement, it's already supposed to happen, that if there is an emergency maintenance, it's supposed to go and we haven't been following the.
That's.
Agreement. So what I'm trying to do is formalize it. We know that the COA process works and the reason it takes longer is because that requires a public hearing. This wouldn't necessarily require a public hearing. What it would require is a meeting of the. Of the committee to say, hey, this is the maintenance, this is the proposed fix. And then that committee would just say, oh, this complies with the standards or doesn't, or make a suggestion like, oh, maybe you should consider X, Y, Z.
You can take that away from HPRC if you're talking about it in story. All of these properties have been designated, at least locally. Cause they're not all within the downtown.
Aren't there, aren't there?
An accommodation for.
Come, accommodations for it's flooding. We have to fix the flood or we have to do something.
Well, with, they're limited, but yes, you you don't have to stand there and watch the water flow in.
But what this would do is add another, well, and like Phyllis said, it's all like certain works that goes good at COA, but what this would make sure. Is that a maintenance job, no matter what the maintenance job is, still is done the way that is appropriate for historic preservation.
Maybe to simplify that, it wouldn't be um. We have a problem and send public works or or hire a contractor, whatever. And not find out exactly how they're going to fix it, because those are the plans. As I'm sure you remember from being on HPRC, that the HPRC looks at. And says, okay, this this kind of roofing is inappropriate, or this is appropriate, or you're replacing life with life. Or whatever the situation may be.
I think the library is a little different complexity because you got a library group involved. I think the library is a little different complexity because you got a library group involved that's operating out of that building. So there's another group involved with the library. For these other ones, they just stand alone. They're not operational.
And they're not, they're not a business, you know, an existing business.
Well, there's not regu- there's not the same kind of wear and tear. There is a wear and tear on the library that you don't see.
And I'm using the library as an example because in fact we are having this difficulty right now. I'm not involved in any of that, so I'm just speaking as, because what I'm trying to understand is, let's just use the hose house as a secondary example. Um, the hose house in my neighborhood has just been be done. But if I drive by one day and go, oh my, somebody has just driven into the hose house and it's obviously compromised. Again, how many steps? Cause that to me is that that's probably what's more likely going to happen is things that are on that scale.
There's still basically two steps. There's probably three or four, but there are little steps in between the big ones.
Good, okay.
You drive by and you see that someone has crashed into the door of the Bryant Hotel. And you call Jonathan or Andy or maybe me or Chuck. I don't know who you want to call, but you call somebody. And you tell them and it gets referred to the this committee and because that's probably not something the city would have budgeted for. Cause you don't expect things like that to happen. We would make the recommendation, we don't hire the contractor to fix it. The city would do that. And then we take the plans or whatever, if it's, let's say it is just the doors and they're going to take them off like they had them off when they redid it and build new doors. Um, then how they're going to do it, we would take to HPRC and be told yes or no. And if if we can't get a COA for what the way they want it fixed, then it's going to take longer, but that's because they were trying to do something that was not historically appropriate.
And Phyllis, in the current agreement also, just on that same point, emergency repairs, the city has some latitude to like stabilize and then they need to inform the committee within a certain.
Stabilize, but not to fix.
Right.
Well, and I, I think you're talking about oversight, right? Oversight on a architectural design is done by the architects, right? They they're watching the contractor for us and they report.
Depends on who your architect is. There are some that think they are city employees and do that kind of oversight, but.
In a normal job site, the architect is part of their responsibility is make sure that job is done to their space.
The architect's a contractor as well. So it still comes back.
Yeah, and then somebody asks for it to the architect. But when you're talking about small repairs and stuff like that, oversight's a different thing.
Well, an example is.
Not a design.
One example might be the doors projects on the library. The doors need to be refinished and there is possibly water damage on the bottom of the doors. Well, depending on how you fix those doors, it could impact the historic fabric of the building. And if we care about that, we need to make sure that we're thinking about it. And so I think that what I'm trying to say is that there may be jobs that don't require COA that we don't want to last a long time, that we still want to do the right way. And I'm not saying people wouldn't do a good job, but I still think that from a transparency standpoint, we're talking one about one of Idaho Springs' most critical assets. We need to make sure that jobs are done. Uh, working on a national landmark building is just a little bit different than working on a steel structure or something that got built.
And Paul, thank you for your patience. So let's, let's stop the what ifs with uh, you know, what could be damaged. Let's use the little Charlie Taylor water wheel as a, as a great example because uh, just about every year, at least every other year, we're constantly replacing beams and portions of that water wheel. Because of winter damage, water damage, just dry rot in general. It's out in the weather and uh particularly I, our local contractor, Scott Wallace, um, he's replaced quite a lot of beams on there that uh that have just come to to rot. So uh, it, you know, is this something we're going to have to take uh pretty continuously to, or should we have a set of standards that we use to make repairs on on the water wheel on a continuous basis?
Yeah, I think though that that capital plan still is, it's supposed to be managed by sites and facilities.
So at my, Jonathan and I have talked a lot about this, um, and my thought process on this one is that there is a capital plan and sites and facilities because one of the things me and I have talked about how staff has really been doing a lot of this, in addition to everything else that staff is doing. So if we have a separate committee that is doing this and goes out and visits every year and says, okay, this is looking great, but the Charlie Taylor water wheel needs seven new beams. Like that is an ongoing process, like this is where that maintenance comes in. You know, and the Charlie Taylor water wheel has a specific set of standards of how it's supposed to look. And the powerhouse, once we fix it, has a specific set of standards. Like these are all, to me, these are all very unique buildings. So I don't think that you can apply a, it must look like this. It does have to go to, you know, Department of Interior or the National Park Service, but each building can have its set of standards. And if you have a separate committee that answers to the city, then the city knows that that committee is looking at, or commission or whatever, is looking at, okay, here's the water wheel. Here are the standards for the hose houses. Here's the standard for the central hose house. Here's the standard for the library. Every building is unique and different. Like I think everything, it's, it's listed in Jonathan's paperwork in his report. Every building and like the Steve Canyon statue all have their own individual, unique aspects. I think that's part of what site and facilities needs to do is look at that so that every year the capital plan addresses them, oh, the seven beams look terrible. We're going to have to replace those. But the hose house looks pretty good. No one's run into the door.
The work could change from what we've done too. It's just, the question is, is how we want to maintain these facilities. And if we want to have a committee that does it, it would be better to formalize it, I think at this point. And the scope of work could be it could be, it could evolve as we need it to evolve. I think the key is is that what we really need to do is the sites and facilities, the board is, or the, not the board, but the committee, all their appointments have expired. And it's a good time for us to think about how this actually should work and updating this agreement in a way that's functional so that in the future it's a transparent process and it's not just us. Um, you know, it like, it ju- it's not just staff saying, oh, let's do this next project, but like we can prioritize them and make sure that people are looking at them the right way and.
But also to clarify, um, along the line of what Lisa was saying, yes, every building is different. But your design guidelines for Idaho Springs and the National Park Service Preservation Guidelines don't care that we have a brick library and a wooden hose house.
They don't care, but they're, they have left enough elasticity in there, like they've left enough elasticity in there.
It depends on, I think, on who's on HPRC at any given time, or I used to be on it, so over the years, that's changed some, but we, we don't, I don't think, I keep saying we, and there's not a we anymore because you don't have any committee members legally right now. Um, although two former committee members are here with me and Scott. Scott used to be on it. He chose not, he chickened out and chose not to be reapply this way. Anyway, um, I don't think the committee it, keyboard is oversight, but we can't tell Paul to go fix something. We can't go out and hire a contractor, say, come and paint the central hose house because the paint is peeling. Um, and in the drafts that I pulled off your website today, it talks about making, doing at least an annual review of all the property. It's already in there and reporting the results of that to council. So
We would also.
Used to do that, so. We did. In the second year that the committee, that sites and facilities existed, we all got together on a Saturday and we did go around and visit every property.
But we haven't done it since. Okay, cause you used to report to council when I was like.
Yes, I used to.
But not to reinvent the water wheel, but isn't there another historic town that's doing this same thing that we could replicate?
This is a rather unique arrangement that we have. A lot of times it's just in the regular capital plan and staff does a lot of the work. And then it goes like for a COA if it needs it. But I think one of the things, that's why I tried to put in my sacrifice, we've had this like relationship with the historical society. But there's some things that are like, it says the historical site is going to put money towards projects and they're supposed to do this and that. They don't have, not that you don't have the resources to do things, but the money resources are not necessarily there and like we have the money and the historical society has a lot of dedicated people who know a lot about the city. And I think there's still a possibility for collaboration there. Um, which, which is why I wanted to kind of put that in there. Is that like, it's something that's existed for a long time. It's just we've evolved past the point where like this agreement is functional.
And and I, I agree with you, Jonathan. And I really think uh, the reason why I was in there about the historical society and funds. Um, and actually I'm, I'm very well reminded of the water wheel situation. There are people that would like to give to something specific. And uh, with the water wheel, actually, uh, there were folks, frankly, that didn't trust the city. And they uh, gave the money, they put the money with the historical society behold in its own sequestered account, not to be commingled with any other funds. And uh, there have been funds such as that that have been donated to uh, you know, the cemetery, for example. And I think that's the reason why we have the language today in there.
Makes sense.
And and then uh, I would just say that I think uh, to make this official and codify uh, a committee uh, would make sense to me. I mean, make, make it uh, official, make it a real, a real committee. And I think that there's more than enough interest in our community that we could, we could actually staff this and and uh, I, I think it would pay huge dividends over the years.
I think because it's also city money and city properties, I think having that transparency so that people can see, it doesn't matter that whether anybody shows up or not, it's transparent, it's there. You can see where sites and facilities is saying, this is where you should spend a hundred thousand dollars. And the public is able to see that how that conversation evolved. Like that to me is really important. I'm going to say as the, as a member of HPRC right now, I don't want this as as a subcommittee. I want it to be its own committee because I agree that our the focus is different regardless of the fact that the scope of work is sort of nebulous still. It's not the same scope of work as it is on HPRC.
You're right, it's not.
It's not, we have.
They're related and they're.
Well, they're closely related and they should talk, but they, it's not the same thing.
Well, and I would like to add too that uh, again, the historical society uh, would like to protect all of these properties. And it's not necessarily the first priority of the city. They have a lot of other things that they take care of. And so the historical society has with the sites and facilities, brought these issues that need to be repaired uh, to the city. Who has the money to pay for it? But in um, just the last recent past, uh, the historical society was given um, a chunk of money through memorial for the hose houses of which uh, we put it in reserve and when you had the need for the Sixth Avenue hose hot house, then that money was available for the city. So um, we're all working together here. So I, I think that it is good to have some kind of a process. And I think it's good to set up these committees so that we do have who to report to and and the chain of command.
And Jen, I assume you also would be in support of this being codified and have its own uh, you know, its own standing and its own committee.
Yeah.
Cause I, I, I believe council would be in favor of that. I'd, I'd like uh, to get the temperature of council on that.
I am fully in support of this being its own commission.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Scott?
Yeah.
All right, Jeremy?
Yeah, I think it has to be its own.
Okay, all right, well, Ken.
Sorry, I, I saw your head nod.
Yes.
So again, on the oversight of these projects, I mean, how is the oversight taking place? Is that approved sites and facilities or HPRC?
And I, HPRC, like HPRC just does the COAs, so there is a.
It gets approved, right?
Yeah, but if it's maintenance, this is my thought process. If it's maintenance, because there are annual visits, because I'm a firm believer in annual visit like every single year, because it's curious, look at the powerhouse. Um, then sites and facilities can say, hey, so this looks really bad. We need to address this. Here's how we need to do it. And that's when you talk to staff about what's going to be taken care of. Maybe, like Jonathan and I have talked about this. You know, like with what needs to happen with the central hose house this year and what needs to happen with train. You know, like those are the, the current projects and the powerhouse that have to have some attention this year.
What I'm saying oversight on maintenance, I'm more in the avenue of, we hire a contractor. Who's reviewing that contractor's work?
So usually, one of the things that could happen is that can still be accomplished by staff. I think to some extent, because what we really need sites and facilities committee to do is say, here's the capital plan. And then when we do have a maintenance project, what my biggest concern was, is that we have a project that doesn't necessarily rise to level of COA, or maybe it's like there's more than one way to do it. Maybe we have a, some kind of like meeting about that to say, is this the best option or should we consider something different? Because there may still be like a cost. Maybe there's a cost thing there or some other reason why it's not possible. Or maybe we decide that it's not a significant historic changer or something like that. But then at least there's something there to say, okay, well, at least we considered the history when we did it. And I think the current agreement kind of does that because it says in an emergency repair situation, the city should stabilize it and then contact the historical society. And then we should figure out how to, like Phyllis said, how to repair it. And I think that something like that could work. Cause the current agreement, it doesn't for two thousand and seven it worked, it just doesn't work in twenty twenty-three, but we can take or twenty twenty-four, think the same idea. And I think we could modify it slightly just to make it um, up to date with what our current arrangement is, I guess.
Scott, I would think, you know, I could envision a time when perhaps Scott was just overwhelmed. Imagine that. And if they chose to, he, I think should have the option to ask sites and facilities. If one of us has the time and the knowledge and whatever, it would feel to be appropriate. So that if someone does, you know, the contractor would need to be told this is whoever and this is what, this person is representing the city. And then that person would come back and report to staff who would report to you and.
Yeah, I mean, cause they have design project, architects are gonna, you know, oversight that. Um, the building department would oversight that. But when you have projects that are maintenance, I mean, we're spending money, we're hiring a contractor. We've been lucky with Scott Wallace to that. He, he's somebody that doesn't need to be watched. He does quality work, but that's not always the case.
One example though, on city hall, we're doing the top pointing and everything. So there's a meeting weekly with Paul there and me and usually Chris and Tim because they were the architects on the project and we meet the contractor and go over the work.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of like been the, and that, so similar processes in the library and and not an exterior thing, but these restrooms as well. And that's been kind of the um, how we've been managing those projects in the past.
But not every maintenance project is going to require an architect, as you were saying. But an example, when.
I might be overthinking it a little bit, but that's the case. Sometimes you don't have the architect there. You have to have staff that oversees it. And it's helpful if that person has construction knowledge, you know?
And Paul overseeing it. Paul, I mean, Paul's got, I mean, he's got a lot on his plate. I think it falls on Paul a little bit.
Yeah.
It's, it's fine. We're, you know, we're overseeing the construction on, on multiple facets of the, the city, the bathrooms, the city hall. Uh, new public works building. We have weekly meetings set up or at least uh, twice a month meetings set up for somebody, just depending on the size of the project. And that's fine. We uh, we've worked through them. It's about updating, finding out uh, our needs, what got missed in the uh, the initial assessments, things of that nature. So we, we've been able to manage all that.
And that's construction management that you're talking about right there.
Give me an example about the maintenance. It used to be a huge problem. Every summer we'd have two or three windows broken on the coach. Kids throwing rocks, whatever. Um, and it seems, I was city clerk at the time and it seems to me someone was always coming in here, usually Bob, saying I need the key, we got another broken window. Um, and we didn't have sites and facilities that. But something like that, that's routine. You just want to make sure that the right material is used and that the person doing it knows how to install. In that case, how to install the window, because that's, those windows on the coach are certainly not like the windows in your house. And one other thing I wanted to point out, it kind of in line with what Jen was talking about, it was sites and facility. It was the historical society that brought forth the idea initially to form this agreement. And thereby the sites and facilities committees. So they've, they were in it really before the city was. There was a little bit of arm twisting going on before, before it became legit. Um, I would like to ask, it sounds like you're going to be doing an ordinance to create, to codify, maybe Mary. I'm looking at the draft and I'd like to get in touch with Jonathan, I guess.
That's the twenty twenty draft, so I haven't even started updating.
Well, it's a start.
Yeah.
And maybe you've already thought of some of the things that I have corrected about.
Okay.
I would like to have that. Um, I looked all this over, Jonathan and I have talked. Um I looked all this over, Jonathan and I have talked quite a bit about it as well over time. And I think the scope of work that's in these draft documents. I can't think of what else we would do, it says, we would be the applicant, when something has to go to HPRC, that we would do the plan. That we would report to council, that we would report to the historic society, which I used to do as well. I would go to one of their board meetings once a year and give them an update. And when the interest dropped off, so did mine, unfortunately. So it seems to me that what, what's proposed here with a little bit maybe of cleaning up or reconsidering. Given more recent circumstances, that what you've done here, first of all, it's a tremendous improvement, this draft agreement. It's three pages long and the original one is. Eight plus all the, there was an additional page for each of the properties. So. Way back pre-COVID, when we first started talking about this. I, I just wanted something short and sweet, it just didn't need to have all that mumbo jumbo, so. Something we could work with.
All right, um. Jonathan, do you need uh any further direction?
No, uh maybe we could schedule a work session once we complete that draft ordinance and just consider this on my time.
That would be excellent, and uh of course, we welcome the input. Um does council have any further questions? All right, I wanna thank everybody, and uh we will move on to the recognition walls.
Mayor Council. We are, we are a little behind on the recognition wall, we had some difficulty. Finding replacement plaques for the wall, but we have found them. We've ordered replacement plaques for everybody that is on the wall, and they can be installed this, you know, when the weather is warm enough. Um staff had a question though about the new people that we had looked at including on the wall. We're not a hundred percent sure what council would like to say on these plaques, there's very limited information available, you only get like so many characters. And so we didn't know if you guys might wanna do uh like Fabian Watchers, for example, nineteen twenty one to twenty seventeen. Now he was a first grade teacher for a very long time, and he was a commissioner, actually, I'm sorry, uh was a commissioner. Um we have information like that, we don't know if that's what we're putting on, or if you guys want to say something different. But what we'd like to do is order the plaques for the remaining people that we um. We, we ordered the ones that are already there, but the ones that we approved in twenty eighteen, we still order. So that's Fabian Watchers, Don Allen, Les Clark, Lou Howard, Dolores Muciando, Mary Cena, and Will Terry. And then the other thing we wanted to know is if council might consider wanting to add anybody else to the wall. And we were thinking about Dennis Lundberry potentially. And so we wanted to bring those two questions to you tonight, so that we could finish ordering the plaques.
Buddy Neese and um Riva, help me, Riva, Riva, yeah.
Oh, Dyckman?
Yep, Dadi Dyckman. Just she on there, okay, good, I don't have the list.
And she has a bridge.
And she's, okay, she's. Um yeah, but I, even though I think she was more of a thorn in the city side at some times, but she was a big donator to the. To the library district, and she was um very beloved by the children that worked at her restaurant over the course of the years, she mentored many, many kids. In that, that crazy restaurant of hers.
How far back are we going, some of these are more modern, right, are we going further back, like Margaret Carlson or?
We could do that, it's up to council, and we could add, you know, um.
I don't think that's a bad idea, honestly, I mean, we could catch up to ourselves by going back in time a little bit, and I think there's quite a few people that. Could be added, Chuck, you and, you and Scott are gonna know way better than I do about who to add.
Well, like Margaret Carlson was a great one.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Would you guys like to consider names on a different, new names separately? Cause what I would like to do is order the rest of the plaques that are supposed to be there now from twenty eighteen.
Yeah, Jonathan, I don't, I don't think you're saying wrong with that, and also, I think we have enough core information. On the list of uh twenty eighteen.
Okay.
To move forward, uh for example, uh Fabian Watchers, Prime, just uh.
Pioneer family, yeah. Planning Commission.
Here's a suggestion too, there's living members of these families that you could ask. How they would want the plaque.
That's a good idea.
They might be able to give you something.
And John, that doesn't have to be you, if you give me numbers, I would certainly be happy to, to do that.
I can tell you the character count too, so we can get it all. If you'd help me with that, that'd be wonderful.
I would love to do it, actually, cause I'd just like to hear the tidbits and stories, and I have to somehow figure out a way I can do it at work, so.
All right, um you need anything further?
Uh well, Buddy Neese and Dennis Lundberry, do you guys wanna, should I add them now, or should we just wait and consider a lot, a longer list or?
Considering the, the, the past couple months, Dennis would be definitely. A good addition.
Yeah, okay, yeah, well, maybe I'll add those two, and then if we wanna talk about this further, we could add further names as well.
All right, and, and I'm sure we will, we should make a point annually of, of revisiting this and considering.
We have a lot of room for more names in the future.
What if we did that by, we had a date that we had to do that by, so that it was a constant reminder, not just, like, maybe every February. Or Valentine's Day, let's think about the names for the recognition wall.
Well, you know, I think St. Patty's Day is a good day to sit back and reflect on folks.
I usually forget by that, dude, but that's right.
Um do you, need anything further?
No, thank you.
And uh council, any, anything further, okay. Uh then we will move to. Uh the snowstorm debrief, and Paul, thank you so much for the Snowmageddon Report. I know this is very, very, very taxing on everybody uh in the city, but especially your. Uh department, uh and uh. Uh Jonathan, I don't know if you wanna kick it off, or can we hand it off to Paul with the initial? Paul, I thought the Snowmageddon Report was very well done.
It was just a timeline of how we attacked this snowstorm, uh again, the guys, uh we worked a lot of hours. Uh we knocked this thing out uh just about uh in its entirety, but the same day it ended. I'd come in on Saturday and finish up a few things, a few places we missed, again, I mentioned Spruce Lane, it's an easy one to forget. And uh I think our crew did a fantastic job trying to keep up with the snowstorm and, and uh. Just uh opening up all these roads while people get up, out their business.
Well, Paul, you know, I know a lot of council members uh got multiple calls, I certainly did on Saturday and Sunday.
Thursday.
And uh Thursday, right, and a lot of folks, you know, are under the impression, for example. Hey, I haven't seen the city crew for uh hours, and they don't know that there were some extreme circumstances, and I'll share just a brief one. You had to take what I considered like unprecedented action of plowing Highway one oh three. Up to the water plant, I mean, wh- when did we ever have to do that, and that was just to gain access to dig out the water plant.
Yeah. Um our, our trucks did get stuck just trying to get to the water plant, by the time I got up there, we got them unstuck, so.
Well, and then uh, you know, I saw a lady pushing a baby stroller on Sunday. In a lane of Colorado Boulevard, because she didn't have the option of pushing a baby stroller on a sidewalk. And I'm just saying, when you get a year's worth of snow, or almost a year's worth of snow in one storm. It, it did, this does not get cleaned up in a couple days. And uh I think under the circumstances, I, I think city crew did a pretty doggone uh good job and. And it's, it's hard, cause had that lady been hit, uh we, we never would have heard the end of this, why uh, you, you know, why that was and.
It was very tough too, cause I, I live on Tenth in Colorado, and I watched you in the Kamatsu for over an hour, just on my little. Like my one block of moving all that snow around, because by Friday, it was wet and heavy.
Well, it already was so wet and heavy, I, I'm just guessing, Paul, it probably took. Three, four times the normal amount of time to clear something, just with the weight you were having to move. Where, yeah, so again, we had to use the loaders, uh by. Thursday, we had to use loaders just to open up most of the roads. Um uh so that the plows could keep up with the, the remaining snowfalls. Um we're pushing, we're not, because we have three feet of snow on both sides of the road. We're pushing ten feet of snow in front of us, so we're just pushing a mountain of snow, the trucks can't take that kind of uh.
It happened all over. All over the place, so you don't feel bad about our truck.
So we did get a lot of complaints about why we're furling to this side or that, we really weren't furling to one side or the other, that's just where the snow went, because. It just overwhelms the equipment.
Can I just, I'm gonna tag on to what you said, so I did have a call on Thursday, it was actually a text, and I probably was a little bit snarkier for the neighbors. Like than I usually am, and I really thought on Friday I was gonna get a call from city hall that says, Kate, you were probably over the line on that one. But I also wanna say, this is probably the first time the guys in your crew have actually recognized how steep that street that I live on. Cause they got stuck in front of my house too, and I was like, oh, see what I'm talking about? Not so easy to get up that street, and you could drive the other way, yeah.
And then that's just pushing that weight of snow.
Exactly, you had nowhere to go.
Both sides are ill.
Yeah, you had nowhere to go on that one.
Paul, I was gonna ask you to touch on priorities uh for a minute, because. I did have uh people finger pointing that the city didn't know their priorities, and frankly, I thought. Uh cleaning out the main parking lot as quickly as it happened uh was very commendable. Although minor street uh downtown commercial district did have to wait, but. That's a more difficult one to get those spaces, because I, I mean, I'm just guessing, if you're not out there at six in the morning, you kinda miss your window, five.
We have to be out there at five.
Oh, okay.
So and, and add to that too, Paul, thank you, and thank everyone that put in all the work. Very much for all of us, but uh you have, I, I know these storms, the last one I remember, two thousand three or whenever we had that big one. Do you have an operating procedure that you follow for this?
We do, and it's the same for every storm, so the, a- as I mentioned here, our first priority is we'll open up uh Colorado Boulevard, and that allows most people to get. At least from one side of town to the other, maybe uh every street's not open at that point, but get through town. Uh minor streets, uh we try and open up as well, then we'll start just moving down the alleys, or the avenues from one side to the other. Uh Montane Park, uh Pine Slope will make a pass through. And uh Gavin, it's just trying to, to open up for us the, like this last snowstorm by uh. Oh, seven thirty, eight o'clock, we made a pass through just about every street, we were also out last night. Uh to get a uh ahead of this one a little bit, but it was an easy one to get ahead of, cause there wasn't much snow on this one.
If I can make a comment about the, the preparation, um as far as emergency services go. Uh we, we met on Tuesday with the state, and, and we're talking two days before the storm, so. Um and then met again on Wednesday, and then Thursday morning, there was a call, and Thursday morning, there was. Our big concern was life safety, um because if somebody was having a heart attack, there was no way that they were gonna get medical to the, to these people. And, and or if they got them to them, get them out of the county, there was actually conversations. On Thursday morning with, we had a countywide meeting with emergency responders and uh emergency management. And so there were, there were potential plans in place to, to make a temporary hospital, a wellness center, which we didn't wanna do. Um I guess what I'm saying is, I, I know that people, you know, they don't think the snow gets cleared soon enough, but um. Good job, and there, I mean, we, they have, the county, we couldn't get resources into the county to, to. Operating some of the machines, so. They, they ended up getting the snowcat, and they were, they, we had people that were stranded in their cars for like sixteen hours on I seventy, so. They had to move snowcats from Golden, and then from here, and then start checking other parts of the county. People stranded on Fall River Road, um Highway one oh three, so I mean, it was um. People may wanna complain about the, the roads not being clear, being cleared properly, but. You're just trying to be able to get an ambulance there to then get the person to a hospital, and no, you couldn't have flown a helicopter on Thursday, that would not happen. So I just wanna commend the, the staff and everybody that are out there working. We had an officer that, that really was just stuck here for twenty four hours during the event, and um slept at least four minutes, so. They, we, we did as much as we could to prepare, um people, uh the fire department gave us, we had thirty sleeping bags on hand. Um if people needed them, but it was, it was really a serious situation for that, that first twenty four hours, so. I just wanna reiterate how serious that we didn't have anybody get hurt or killed.
And, and the serious nature, I've had a house here for thirty years, I don't ever remember the county declaring an emergency.
Ever.
Cause of snow, ever.
It was just too, it was too heavy to move, which is what I was saying, and we have a limited amount of staff and resources, and it's like. They are literally doing the best they can with what we have, and it's not like we can buy ten more trucks, it's just not feasible. Nor can the state, which they were also in, in, you know, trouble as well, so I think you guys did a great job. What I did was I reached out to teenagers and had them dig me out, cause that's the best way to get.
By my house carrying a shovel, I, I hired him to shovel my watch.
And I speak to, I'm sure one of the bigger problems with a storm like this is where do you put the snow? You can't, you don't have enough places to put all the snow.
That was a little bit of our delay with uh getting right to the downtown area, we had mountains of snow, there's still mountains of snow up against uh where we normally store our snow. Uh but we were kind of at capacity there, so giving it a couple days, cause it was melting pretty fast. Uh giving it a couple days to, to uh whittle down, um settle down a little bit, gave us some opportunity to get out there, get that snow a little bit easier. Not having to worry as much about overwhelming what storage we do have.
All right, uh is there anything further uh from uh council on the snow?
Oh, River, he's, it was also Riverside, I think.
Uh this had to do with uh some icing issues, and we did talk to uh Cho, one of the engineers with HGR. And um the, the section of road's been recently rebuilt, and I'm just, I was just down there again today, and uh. We can address this with uh operations, so we can get down there, we can sand that area, we can salt that area. Uh what we need is a little heads up that uh, you know, hey, you know, ice is building back up, we don't always notice these things. You start to roll through this town with blinders on sometimes, even though you don't need to, but I'm trying to look, find the issues, that's not a road that everybody drives down. Everybody's up Gilson Avenue, back on the Colorado Boulevard, we rarely get down to that end of town, it's starting to ice up right now, and uh one of the issues down there is. The cars that are constantly parked there that help create that ice damming, cause you can't. You can't get in the, the plows to, to move that material out, so it just wants to settle in over there on that shady side of the road. Now, operationally, we can handle this, we just have to be able to get in there to handle it.
So does the HOA manager, are they, do they know that they need to speak with you?
They do not, and I haven't touched, uh I haven't, I haven't reached out to those guys yet, and uh. I just, like I said, I was just down there this afternoon, took pictures.
It's not like you don't have enough to do, but I'm just like that, that might help mitigate some of this, because apparently this was a problem from what she said for like years. Like if there's more open communication, I think that can help alleviate this.
I don't know that it's been years, we've, this is the first year that uh anybody's brought up, released any sort of ice issues in the area. But we've had ice issues everywhere this year, um there are other years where we've had ice issues, um Center Alley's a continuous ice issue.
All right, um anything further from council? All right, uh Paul, also, uh you're up on our last item, and uh it really has a lot to do with uh safety, and that's a crosswalk sign.
Yes.
I wanna thank you for all your research on that. Um I think uh you also have identified the most critical intersections for us to. Implement uh these uh, the, the signs and, and hopefully weigh uh if they're making it, you know, it's safer. And, and I would certainly think so.
And again, this just uh, this is kinda collaborative on what we felt were the most used crosswalks and, and. Those six came up, this is a fairly inexpensive system, even at uh fifteen thousand. Um some of the other ones were uh seven thousand per, per sign, so. This is a really inexpensive system that's adding on to what we already have out there, we're not pulling out the signs and putting all new ones there, we're just adding on to what we already have. And if it's a good system, if this is something that's bright enough, if this is something that uh, that works well. Um there's no reason why we can't continue on to uh, to, to other troubled uh crosswalks, but. Um this is something that everybody's noticed, I'm sure everybody in this room has noticed this, that those crosswalks, drivers don't always see them. I think this is gonna help a little bit, and uh it might steer us towards a different type of lighting system on these. There are some that uh are around the perimeter of the sign. Uh we felt that these uh flashing beacons that were just below the sign would, would uh, would give enough notice to a driver, grab their attention. grab their attention to let them know there's a sign there. There's crosswalk there. So uh this is more doing this should be on to tonight's council agenda for approval and hopefully it is and and uh we can move on and get some of these uh crosswalks installed.
We've had complaints about this issue. Um I'm not sure why it's worse now. I think some of it had to do with um the the new businesses going in on the east end, on the south side of Colorado Boulevard. And just the foot traffic between uh smoking yards and those businesses that are now opening across the street and thriving, so. That's really what started the conversation, but um we have received complaints about this. Seems like one on the east end of the city, but as Paul said, this is kind of a trial period, get to see if these, if if we're happy with this, the residents are happy and the businesses, so it's very well worth it. We're very much.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think if we save one person from injury, it was money well spent. I was looking at uh if not the exact, a very similar uh implementation in Minterne, which uh some of you may know, it's just Jason's available. I bring that up because it also is a very touristy and a very cold environment. Um and uh you know, it seems to have worked very, very well. They were up quickly, so quickly, I I I wasn't even aware that they were being installed. They were just there one day. And uh I'm excited uh that, you know, hopefully we'll have the same kind of uh success here in Idaho Springs with those.
I I I appreciate what you're doing, Paul, because I hope that the same sign that is going to be alerting the drivers will alert the people that are walking across the street without stopping and looking both ways. I think that would be a helpful reminder for them as well, with this in their hand, because I've seen that a lot.
There's a, there's, it wasn't part of this package, but I've seen some other uh packages, you know, push here to cross. So uh we may have to purchase some other smaller signs to uh to kind of highlight that button.
Yes.
I was kind of being facetious, but I do hope that it kind of, not, not, not really, not, not that much, because I have to like seriously, like they're just walking, you know, and then I'm aware that you're there, but you have not seen me, so I don't even know that you know that I'm gonna run you over. So yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right, uh anything further from council? All right, I wanna thank everybody. Uh we'll take about ten minutes and uh reconvene in our normal meeting at uh seven P M.
I mean, I was, I was completely snowed in.
Oh, I just didn't go anywhere.
I usually sit next to one, right. Hey, you can sit here also.
Uh let me ask John. John, is there any, or whether there's any way to create a couple more agendas for the folks in the audience? I appreciate it.
You have one? You have a, how many?
Actually, I was given one uh here, you know, there, there's someone very passionate. I know, but I think that one makes sure.
That's, I think he wanted to use the last time.
Even if they weren't, go away. Uh it's um it's, I I found it pretty well done.
No, no.
Does have a different angle, but um it's good, so it's good information.
I wanna do my subject.
Oh, nice. You work with partners?
No.
Yes.
We got emails from certain parents.
We're gonna have a public hearing on uh.
We're.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay. Hello, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, March 25th, 2024 Regular Council Session here in the city of Idaho Springs called Order at 7:00 p.m. And we will start off with a roll call, please.
Kate Collier.
Here.
Janine Mariani.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Lisa Manifold.
Here.
Scott Knell.
Here.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Anna, all please rise for the Lengel Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic of which the stand one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We have an agenda before us tonight. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda for March 25th, 2024.
All right, thank you Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. Any discussion of the agenda? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, does anyone tonight tell they have a conflict of interest? Hearing none, we will move on to the minutes for March 11th, 2024. And do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from March 11th, 2024.
Thank you Lisa, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Janine, thank you. Any discussion of the minutes? All right, then all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move to the bills for March 25th, 2024, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills to March 25th, 2024.
Thank you Kate, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Scott. Any questions on the bills?
I do have one, the 80 miller services, the very first one, is that the final payment for? Evie didn't even, I didn't get my question out.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I just was at the final payment or just an installment?
That's an installment payment.
Okay.
That's work to now.
Work to now, okay.
Good question. Anything further?
That was it, thank you.
All right. There are nothing further, roll call please.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Knell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Tonight, I want to welcome everybody, both online and in the audience. If you haven't done so, anyone that would like to speak tonight, please sign up. Everyone has three minutes. And I'm very pleased that you're here tonight to speak with us. Normally, there isn't any back and forth between council, it's our time to listen. And the first step I have on public comment, by the way, we may add if there's further names on here, I have Virginia Feld, welcome, please come up.
Where do I stand?
Over here.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah. Virginia Feld, 343, down, down. 343 19th Avenue.
Thank you.
And I'm nervous, okay?
Oh, please, please, please don't be, we're glad to have you.
Okay, well, I know you're all busy, and I appreciate your time. But you have let an 80-year-old man, Charlie, take care of your responsibilities on Virginia Street. From Candace Lucas' old house, all the way to Danny Thompson's house on the corner, which is a five-block area. I have watched people fall on the street. I watched 80-year-old Charlie chip away ice on your street every winter for 10 years. Bob and Charlie are giving the castle to the city of Idaho Springs to become a museum when they die. We on Virginia Street feel that we are the ugly, sorry, stepchildren. This road, Virginia and 19th, has not been maintained properly for the, and I know for a fact, since 1975, because that's when my family moved up here. I watched the city take care of everyone else's problems and everybody else's roads all over this town, except for 19th and Virginia Street and Wall Street. The last storm on 13th of the March, the snow plows went by two days later, barely removing snow in front of our house on 19th Street and in front of the castle, leaving behind pure ice. Charlie had to pay someone just to get into his castle, and how unfair. In the meantime, the rest of Idaho Springs is able to have nice clear roads all over. And I looked, I took a ride, and I looked. You can't even walk on the side of the castle, Virginia Street, due to the ice. And when the snow plow does come by, he doesn't plow it. I saw, I have pictures to prove it all. He didn't plow that street, he went on by. I'm not a lawyer, but I tell you, it looks like a lawsuit to me. Has this been an ongoing problem? Yes. How long have you seen this problem with my own two eyes since 1975? Have you called before you, have I called about this problem? Yes, many times. And who did I talk to? The voices on the phone. Well, we usually don't give this much snow. Yeah, I know. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Virginia. Mariah, we have you up next, please, I welcome, come on up.
Nice to see you all again. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Marial White, 1430 Minor Street.
Thank you.
Okay, so I appreciate all the hard work you guys do. It's not easily what you do, it's generally a thankless position. I know, because I was the president of my homeowners association in Florida. I know exactly what you go through. I'm here tonight to address three issues. I'm going to try to be brief so that I can get, give you guys an understanding of these issues. Snow removal is inadequate in our city. May I hand these photos to you?
Sure.
Who wants to start? These photos were taken Monday afternoon. I was, I had called City Hall to get on the agenda and was treated very rudely by the person, we don't need to know who it is, to get on the agenda to talk about this. So it's the second time an employee of the city has been rude to me. The first time I came down and Andy takes the brunt of my wrath. And generally, I'm pretty polite. But hanging up on a citizen who was not rude at all to begin with is not acceptable. These pictures that I'm handing out, we're taking Monday afternoon, like I said. As you can see, these pictures are in direct conflict with Mr. Crane's report. Per his written statement titled "Snowmageddon 24", he states on the last page, I do need that paper. Sorry. Week of the 18th, with great weather, our public works team worked diligently on removing the largest piles of snow, clearing the downtown stretch on Minor Street, and slushing as much snow from the parking areas along the streets as practical. These operations will continue through the week as other obligations allow. And then he goes on to tell us his man hours. In the beginning of his statement, he states, "All hands on deck on the 14th." Well, that's great, I don't know how many hands on deck. But in a prior conversation with Mr. Crane, he told me he did not have the manpower nor the equipment. This was a storm prior to snowmageddon. My concern, and as others that are in here, is for the safety of our citizens as well as our visitors. Sidewalks were cleared by business owners, as should be, and every...
Mariah, please continue.
Okay. People tried walking from the street to sidewalks only to encounter deep snow and ice before getting onto the sidewalk. So in other words, you have to go up over mounds of snow with your heart back here or whatever. I understand the depth of the snow. I understand the workload that was put on the city. The city had plenty of advance warning about the storm. They were broadcasting days ahead of time, it was going to be a major snowstorm. I understand that you guys received many calls from citizens about snow removal. I understand that the city has its priorities to make sure that people that are in danger are taken care of on a first basis, as Virginia stated. You guys probably got really tired of answering the phone and hearing people complain about things. I'm there with you, I understand that, but there's no place for rudeness. Perhaps a statement from the city surprising citizens of the citywide efforts to clear snow via social media would curtail most calls. Well, that's about the rudeness, I've already told you that. Lastly, I would like to see a little more police presence on Minor Street through the business district since I see the cruisers go by, but especially at night. Cars are driving the opposite direction many times, I mean, I sit and see it constantly. I know you guys are busy. How about just walking our street once in a while? I don't hardly ever see that. I know you're busy again. But Minor Street is where all, it's the main hub, ojos, guys, to take into consideration what, but as a concerned citizen, I wish you would please look at these issues.
Well, Mariah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have Samantha up next.
She's virtual.
Oh, she's online?
Yes.
Well, Samantha, welcome, I hope you can hear us.
Sam, you're muted. So, is it possible to bring her up on the screen? Yeah, it's not letting her, okay. There we go, okay. Thank you. Can you hear us? We're not hearing you, Sam.
Thank you. Oh, please.
Well, yeah. Well, are you, we might need to get your name on this.
I'm on schedule.
Yeah.
We've got a list of unscheduled, so we can just get you on the list there.
He's already on the list.
Yeah, let me, I'll call everybody.
Oh, yes, okay, are you Tim?
Dave.
Oh, that would be me. Oh, I see. Well, Dave, since you're standing, why don't you come on up? And then you're Dave?
David Feld.
Oh, Dave, okay. And you're, all right, well, welcome, Dave, good to have you.
Dave, can you please state your name and your address?
David Feld, David Feld, 343 19th Avenue.
Thank you.
Minor Street.
Thank you.
I just have a short thing here, I echoing my wife's problems, I helped Charlie myself today shovel snow at the castle, you know, you just can't get enough of it. A lot of people have fallen on the streets, in fact, there. 19th Avenue is a very narrow street. And the big, you know, the larger vehicles trying to get down, you know, it's to avoid the cars. And I think a couple cars got nicked a few times, but it's no, you know, that's another issue. The they hit our retaining wall, and they, and they turned it up. I did call police once on a fellow, but I got the license plate, and I don't know what happened on that, but I, you know, I just wanted to talk to him. They probably have a report thing on it. There's a lot of cars parked on 19th and on Virginia Street right by our house that are, it seems like they've been there a long, long time, a lot of them. And I'd like the code officer, you know, that checks the codes to officers or, I don't know how many there are, I'm 51 and above. Maybe do a review of the parking permits up in our area just to see if those cars actually belong there, because some of them have been there a long, long time. I'd just like to see them, check them, and and see if, you know, maybe somebody shouldn't be there that is there, you know. So that's all I have, my wife would pretty well put it, what's going on, you know, people falling and everything. I just don't want to see you back in hurt.
All right.
Let you lay you over here and talk.
Mayor, may I say something, it's not a number five, I just want to ask you directly. Is this something that we can discuss in the future? Because I, I, there are cars all over town, and I've noticed in particular areas where it's a surplus of cars that don't move for a very long time.
Yeah, I would agree.
Virginia, I mean, 19th Street is an unusual street. It's very short, and it's very narrow. And the dumpster came by today, and just as an aside, he got stuck, I had a backup, I got stuck. And when I went to accelerate, I flipped the window off my truck, which the truck has taken a lot of beating, but this is like the last rock. Anyway, long story short is, that's how narrow this street is.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if there's a way that we can discuss parking, and maybe we decide that certain places are no longer viable for parking cars because our cars have gotten bigger, so on and so forth. But is that a work session thing that we can talk about? And long-term parking of cars, I don't know what our rules are.
Short-term.
Well, there's, there's some that are just been there for literal years, so. And I'm not just saying this particular multiple areas or something.
Yeah. Well, Dave, thank you very much, and Tim, please come up.
Mayor, I've also got Sam back when you're ready for it.
Oh, okay, sorry, Tim, I appreciate your patience. Samantha, I'm glad the audio was fixed. And welcome, I hope you can hear us okay.
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep, it's Samantha Dine in 98 12th Avenue, Idaho Springs, Colorado. Thank you for having me here this evening, it's good to see everybody again. Hopefully you saw the information that was provided to you previously on my request tonight, which includes asking for a donation for our egg extravaganza that's happening this coming Saturday. And also for a donation request of $1,000 for Rapid Growth, which is taking place in August. And in addition, I'd like to request that City Council approve us doing two nights of camping for Rapid Growth again this year. Last year was the first year that I did camping for Rapid Growth. And there was very minor changes to the plans that I submitted to you for this year. And the way that we did this last year worked really well, we didn't have any issues at all. And I was very pleased with how the camping portion went. I, I know you're not able to ask questions in public comments, so I just, if you do have any further questions that you'd like to talk to about at this time, or if you'd like to reach out to me in the future, then I believe everyone has my email address. But as always, on behalf of the Rec District, we super appreciate your support of all the events that we do here in Idaho Springs.
All right, well Samantha, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Tim, I want to thank you again for your patience, please come up.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Well, certainly, Tim Hicks, 1528 Wall Street.
Thank you.
Counsel, everyone, believe it or not, not here today to talk about West Wall Street. And so maybe a sigh of relief there, I'm not entirely certain. But in any case, I would like to talk briefly about the idea of emergency planning. You know, this storm was historic in nature. And as Mariah mentioned, we did have plenty of warning. Yet, you know, on Thursday, most of us were socked in. And I wonder, we got around anywhere from eight to 12 inches the evening before on Wednesday, yet I don't remember seeing a single plow running. Now, that's in stark contrast to what I observed last night. You know, we get a small snowstorm, and it looked like you guys were rolling. I don't mean to minimize, you know, the efforts that you put in and your department put in, Paul, because I do know that it looked like a lot of work. But the one thing that I know is that snow is much more difficult to clear once it's accumulated than as it's falling. And so I ask a question, you know, why was that, why did that not occur? Why weren't, why didn't we have salt on the roads? Why wasn't, why weren't things moving a little quick, a little more quickly? Because I think that really could have prevented a lot of the issues that many of the public are here to discuss with you this evening. And certainly, you know, some of that involves a little frustration. It makes me wonder, if we can't handle snow, a big snow in a town like this, are we, are we at risk for other emergency situations? You know, are there, are there any other emergencies that could potentially, you know, damage the community or put us in a position that we find ourselves somewhat helpless? You know, not unlike, you know, Clear Creek did and declared an emergency. So I respectfully ask, you know, the council and others to consider disaster planning a little more seriously going forward, snows included. And that's all I have to say.
All right, well, Tim, thank you very much. And Troy, I have you up next, welcome.
Troy, 1424 Minor Street.
Thank you.
Mayor, I too want to talk about snow, but I want to come to you also with a thought of how to maybe rectify it. I'm the general manager at Two Brothers Deli, I did open on Thursday, I did open on Friday. I fed all the people that were stranded, I didn't feed any local people. Nowhere for anybody to park, they had to come from come and go and the charging station that's at the beginning of town. Minor Street wasn't plowed till the end. Big parking lot was first to be plowed. It's my competitor in a big way. My solution is, why don't you think later on at a private meeting about putting snow removal out for our F P? If we don't have enough plows, we don't have enough people. There was, I don't know, 20 people on social media looking with plows for work. Why not keep the money in the community and in the spring or late fall, put that out for our F P and let people bid on it? And then free up his time to just manage those people. I think it would be a huge benefit to the city. It worked in a town that I came from of 33,000 people. They didn't have enough staff, nobody has enough staff, but I think it's something worth thinking about switching to. So I wanted to offer a solution and not just come with the problem. Thank you.
Troy, thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
All right, I believe that concludes, oh, yes.
I have one more thing to say.
Well.
Because I put on the unscheduled also.
Yes, ma'am, you did, and why don't you come on up?
Thank you. Virginia Feld, 343 19th Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like to explain that 19th Street, the fire department, the police department, ambulance cannot go up that road. We were called, my husband had to call an ambulance, and I had to walk all the way down to Virginia Street to get into the ambulance to take, to go to the hospital. They can't get up there, they can't maneuver that road. If you go up there and you evaluate it, you will see it's impossible. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you, Virginia. All right, I believe that concludes public comment, both scheduled and unscheduled. And we don't have any liquor licensing items tonight. Is the financier, finance officer with us tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well.
Hello, everyone.
If you can hear me, welcome.
Thank you, I don't see myself on the screen, but I think I'm going to share my screen to review the financial statements. Here we go, panelists. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hey, good evening.
Start the video. Hi, everyone, glad to see you tonight. Tonight, we're going to look over the February financial statements. And let me see if I can share my screen with you. Can you see those pretty well, or should I enlarge them?
Well, we, we can follow along as we have copies, it might help if you could ignore, enlarge it slightly.
Okay. How's that?
All right.
Right, can you enlarge, oh, right, can you enlarge that just one more notch, maybe, or two?
Is that all right? Okay. So tonight, we're looking at the February financial statements. And I like to look at these because we finished at the time these were printed almost everything that we needed to do for the year-end audit of the previous year. And so the beginning, the fund balances that were coming over to start twenty twenty-four are accurate on these statements, are fairly accurate, subject to audit. So starting with page one, which is all of the cash you have. Um, this shows you were in a good cash position at the end of February of nine, almost nine point five million dollars. And it's divided up into various funds. First one down below shows the amount that's of the nine million that is allocated to general fund, and you see each of your other funds and their shares of that cash. We go to page two of the financial statements. That amount is the first amount showing in the general fund, cash from the combined funds. And so we're looking at this balance sheet. You've got assets of two point four million in that top section. You've got some smallish uh liabilities and some revenues that hadn't hadn't come in yet at year end. But down here, you've got a fund balance of a million seven thirty-eight to start twenty twenty-four. Going on to the revenues, we're going to focus on revenues and beginning fund balances at this point in the year. Um, general fund revenues come in a little slowly at the beginning because one of your big revenues and your top ten are highlighted um is your property taxes, and that doesn't usually come in until um February, April, and June are the time when most people pay. So you've got about a quarter million that you will expect to collect during the year, and those generally come in as as levied without too many variances from what the budget is. Um, you've got sales tax that seems to be a little slower than most years. So this page shows you the actual at the end of February in twenty-two, the actual at the end of February in twenty-three, what came in during February of twenty-four and what the year-to-date actual of January and February was for this year. And you see that it's about the same as it was back in twenty twenty-two. It had been higher in the previous year. You had kind of a uh little bit of a drop from last year so far during the year. Your revenues are at eleven point six percent from your taxes, and again, most of your property taxes don't come in till um April and June. License permits, you don't, haven't had any activity for the year so far, and that's one of your bigger revenues. So generally, that happens, of course, in the warmer months. Um, you've got marijuana sales tax, which is a little lower than last year and the year before at this point in the year. Could be late payment or something of that nature, so that's nothing to be alarmed about. And some of these things, like the severance tax, come in once in the fall, so you won't be seeing that for a long time. So your revenues tend to start out a little slow. Um, fines seem to be up right now, um as opposed to the same time in the previous two years. And so your total general fund revenues through February were at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Last year, this time, they were four hundred and eighty-one thousand. Um, but the year before, they were more like they are now. In fact, you're a little higher than the year before. So I don't see anything to be concerned about in in these revenues so far. And we're going to slip forward pretty quickly through the expenses. They seem to be about what you would expect this at this time of year, and they're or a little higher. And I run to the end and get the total fund expenses on page twelve of the financial statements. And so far for the year, you're you're at eighteen percent of budget. Um, and only about sixteen percent of the year has elapsed. Let's see what it's. What percent of the year it is? Uh, sixteen percent of the year elapsed. So slightly higher, that's not unusual either, because some of your big bills, you have to pay insurance and things like that. Often you have some big payments at the beginning of the year. The cemetery trust fund is no real activities, little interest, but your ramp fund for Colorado Boulevard is being planned to be brought down. Started the year with six hundred and fifty-three thousand in cash. And you're earning some interest on that in page sixteen of the financials. You've gotten about five thousand six hundred dollars so far. And you've had no expenses so far during the year on road maintenance from that fund. Here's your general improvement fund, though. And the first thing I want to highlight here is this um advance from the water fund. This is twenty nineteen advance due from the wastewater fund, wastewater, not water. Um, it used to be in the two million dollar figure, and we've made some entries to pay some of that down at year end, so that's looking better. Then you have your sales taxes coming into this fund and building use tax, which is, again, there's no real building activity happening. So that's about on target, a little slow, like the general fund was. And then the expenses are at about four percent. Many of your budget line items are for big ticket items, public works facility one point seven and the police station improvements, which haven't had big expenses charged there yet. Well, not that big anyway, hundred and ten thousand, hundred and eleven thousand on the public works facility year-to-date. With next is this conservation trust fund where the lottery money is. You've got about a hundred and eight thousand there. Revenues come in at the end of each quarter, and so there's just a little interest showing here right now, and you're saving those funds for a larger project that hasn't, a project that hasn't been named that's here in the budget for later this year if needed. Has to be spent on parks or certain recreation facilities. Here's your one percent street tax fund, started the year with a million four ninety-two. It's had revenue come in at its same percentage as the other two funds, a hundred thirty-six thousand so far from the sales tax. And then you've got some expenses, uh no expenses so far this year. Your water fund and your next three funds are your enterprises, so they not only show your cash, but they show your big improvements and water system and wastewater system here on their balance sheet. They show fund equity here in water of six million dollars. Um, some of that is, needs to be repaid for your various loans that you've you've had out, but that's getting down below a million, so that's good. And we look at the revenues, um sales tax uh coming in so far this year, about the same as the other funds. You've got um usage fees that are about what it should be at this time of year. And no cap fees received yet. And you've got your revenue, your expenditures in various operations. And distribution expenses, some upgrades for capital. And the total fund has paid one of its debt service payments for the year. There'll be another one later, so um, oh, no, this one was that paid most of it already. So you're at um, six point six percent of your expenditure budget so far, so it's kind of a slow start on spending. With water is similar. You've got these assets here, both in the ground and and liquid assets. You've got here that same highlighted amount. This is what's due to the other fund. And so that needs to be paid back. When that's paid back, then your cash will go down. So you've got one point four six in your combined cash fund. And obviously, you don't have the money to pay back to the sales tax fund in this fund that is owed. That's why it's being paid off over, paid back over time as as it can be. Sales taxes again coming in thirteen point three percent of what's budgeted. Um, user fees looked normal. Um, we've got a grant budgeted, nothing yet on that. And then your operating amounts are about as expected with total expenditures being at six point one percent of the budget. Your last fund is your parking enterprise fund, and it has these um liquid assets as well as construction assets. Started the year with nine hundred and fifty-six thousand in its retained earnings, and you've added another seventy-three thousands already to have about a million dollars in that fund. Parking fees are coming in um higher than the past year during these periods. And the fees did not used to go to this fund in twenty-two. They went to the general fund. That's why there's zeros here. Not that you collected zeros, but they weren't in the enterprise fund yet. They had not yet been established. And expenses um are minimal for design and engineering last year, and nothing yet. This year, just twenty-five hundred dollars. So you're off to kind of a predictable start, and I don't see anything that concerns me. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, council, any questions for Lorraine? All right, Lorraine, good to have you as always, always informative, and a big thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Night. All right, that concludes the finance report, and we will move on to resolutions. Uh, starting with resolution number six, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number six, series twenty twenty-four. Resolution finding an annexation petition submitted by the Colorado Department of Transportation or C dot to annex approximately one hundred acres of property within section twenty-five Township Three South Range seventy seventy-three west of the Sixth Principal Meriden in Clear Creek County, Colorado, to be substantially compliant with S R S thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh seven one and setting a public hearing on the petition to consider annexation of the property.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? Uh, second and any discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. Okay, we will move to ordinance first reading, starting with the ordinance number ten. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number ten, series two thousand twenty-four, ordinance approving amendment to the occupancy agreement for twenty sixty Minor Street between the city and the Historical Society of Idaho Springs.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second from Lisa. Thank you. And any discussion? Our hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And moving to ordinance number eleven, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance rezoning an approximately thirty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-seven hundred square foot parcel owned by the city known as twenty sixty Minor Street from Park and Recreation P to Commercial One C one.
Thank you, Janine. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second from Kate. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And move into our last first reading, ordinance number twelve. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twelve, series two thousand twenty-four, an ordinance accepting and recognizing the alignment of nine hundred block of Minor Street.
Thank you, Sean. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second from Kate. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. Uh, we will move to ordinance second reading, and we're going to enter into a hearing on this matter. And this is a public hearing before city council of the city of Idaho Springs on ordinance number seven uh, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance designating a property known as three oh two Southern Creek Road, otherwise Indian Hot Springs, as a local historic preservation site. The order of the hearing will be as follows, staff introduction and testimony of applicants. Uh, if they're if they're present, any public testimony, uh, this hearing is now declared open at seven forty-three. And as staff, welcome. Well, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you mentioned, this is a request by the owner of the Indian Hot Springs for designation as a local historic site. You've heard this previously a couple of months ago, um when it was petitioned, so you have made a little background. The owner, Daniel Kim is here, is on Zoom. Kate McCoy from CPI Colorado Preservation. I'll just go into this pretty briefly. The owners plan to work with state and national designation, but local designation ensures uh access to grant funding and tax credit opportunities for rehabilitation and restoration. The H P R C has reviewed this February twentieth and recommended that city council designate this site. Hot Springs Resort of some kind has been operating since the mid eighteen sixties. The existing main hotel building was built in nineteen fifteen during the period of significance for the community. Um, if the site's designated, it would require certificate of appropriateness that's reviewed by H P R C before any um exterior work can be done. So there's seven criteria that can be considered for designation. Uh, we found that staff believes the site meets the first three of those, that it's associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of the city's history. It's associated with lives of persons significant in the city's past and embodies the distinctive character of a type period or method of construction, having been constructed during the period of significance with architectural characters of other historic structures in the city. So I'll I'll keep it at that for now. Staff recommends that city council designate a site as a local historic site in accordance with chapter twenty-two of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code. And as I mentioned, Daniel is here, and so is Kate from CPI, so.
All right. Uh, well, Daniel, welcome. Good to see you again. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Hey, city council, thank you.
We're we're all ears.
Dan, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep, it's Daniel Kim, sixty-six sixty Fern Drive, Denver, Colorado, eight zero two two one.
Thank you.
Yeah, city council, I I like to just state that I like to get this local nomination going for uh many improvements throughout the years coming. I know this is going to be a long process. I've gotten a lot of letters of support locally, um and also around the Denver metro area, hoping that we can get this started with this step one with the help of Kate McCoy and Dylan.
All right, very good. And did we have anyone else that was going to speak to this tonight?
Um, hi, I'm Kate McCoy from Colorado Preservation, and I've been working with Dan um assembling a team of architects and engineers to, you know.
I'm sorry, I think we have to swear you in.
Can you please state your name and address?
Um, Kate McCoy, and my address is thirty-six North Road, Altma, Colorado, eight oh four two oh.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please continue.
I'm sorry about that. Um, so I've been working with Dan for about a year now to assemble a team of preservation architects and engineers and contractors to advise him on how to preserve this historic site. And we're excited to put in a grant a week from today, um, April first. Um, and designation is important for that application, so I'm hoping that we can get that and keep moving forward.
All right. Well, thank you. Did we have anyone either in the public tonight or online that would like to speak to this?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there anything further from staff? Dylan, did you have anything further?
Nope, nothing further.
All right. All right. Um did uh council have any questions? Yes.
Um I was just wondering, reading the historical information, I saw that it used to be named Radium Hot Springs, and it just just out of curiosity, has um that name or that historical name or the context like been considered in uh any of this research or work forward? It's really just out of curiosity, learning more about the history.
What was your question again about the name of Radium Hot Springs?
To be radium and now Indian, I'm just curious about the name, if that's been um I I just either like that there was a different name historically, how that has been considered, if it has been at all, just out of curiosity.
Um there was, um so it it was called the Radium Hot Springs.
You understand?
Can I, I'll I'll try to paraphrase that, Kate?
Yeah.
I think Janine's just curious about why are you, have you, or would you consider the Radium Hot Springs the original name for going forward? I think that's what she's asking.
Great.
Is there any significance there to like put any bearing on that? Am I, is it, am I, was I there?
Yes, yes. So and and it's okay if you don't have curiosity.
Radium Hot Springs is probably a pretty cool name, no?
So the name Radium Hot Springs probably fell out of favor when people realized that uh radium was a radioactive and harmful and toxic substance, and so I'm not uh sure that restoring that name is a good idea.
Thank you, thank you. Just, yeah, just regardless of uh.
Can be a straw. Hey, I I wanna thank you. Is there uh any further questions? Okay, uh I will declare the hearing closed at seven fifty. And uh council, uh I would uh like to ask if we have a motion on ordinance number seven?
I'll motion on ordinance number seven, series twenty-two-four, an ordinance designating property known as three oh two Southern Creek, also known as Indian Hot Springs, as a local historic preservation site.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh second from Kate, uh any further discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh we have a staff report with uh one uh proposal for action. And if I could have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a proposal from Wallace Landscaping in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the repair of the wooden exterior ramp and stairs at the visitor's center, and that's out of count number twenty-one dash zero zero dash seven zero four one.
Uh thank you, Scott, and do I have a second?
Second.
Uh second from Kate, any discussion?
So, I, I do have one thing, so one of the things that we had talked about was doing trex decking is um I don't see, are we not looking at that for cut?
Well, uh as it was explained to me, and I, by the way, I want you to know, I ran this by uh Paul, I greatly value his opinion on this. Um while trex works great for uh your flat decks, you know, and just for longevity, uh it's it's not as good on angles.
It's slippery.
Uh yeah, it is.
Unfortunately.
Uh but I will tell you, uh Scott is taking the added step of uh taking a special tape that's going to go over uh the joists that the regular two-by-sixes are gonna screw into to help uh preserve. And uh he believes there's every reason why we probably, if we stick to a a maintenance schedule uh with spray and the the lumber with some treatment, there's no reason why we wouldn't get at least twenty-five more years out of this one.
Yeah, that would be good.
That was brought up at the Historical Board meeting, that trex was also a additional cost, quite a bit additional cost, and then also if we treated it on a regular basis somebody was in charge of maintaining then we'd get thirty-plus years.
But this wouldn't generally be on the sites because it's not at historic value, so. Building is for some reason on that agreement though, which is funny.
Really?
Yeah, I don't, it probably doesn't rule on there.
That agreement is weird up, like, let's just say it, that really is weird up.
Um any uh further questions? All right, uh hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, uh moving to Assistant City Administrator, uh two requests for actions tonight. Uh the first one is about our uh DOLA Energy Impact Assistance Fund. Uh do I have a motion?
That's that's the second one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kate, thank you for saving me on that.
It's okay, I'll jump to the first one then.
Thank you very much.
I'll move to, I I I move to a, I make a motion to allow larger encroachment areas in the downtown historic district subject to administrative and regulatory review and approval.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Unanimous.
All right. Well, that's uh there we go. Very good, Janine, and um I have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? Uh hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to the second one uh about our uh DOLA Energy Impact Assistance Fund. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve an application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Energy Impact Assistance Fund for up to a one million dollar grant to support the rehabilitation of seventeen forty-four Minor Street into the new Idaho Springs Police Station.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh second from Scott, and any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, uh Dylan, uh fine job tonight. Uh we don't have a report, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything else to add tonight?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And um Wonder, thank you uh for your report. Uh anything further tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh Chief, good report as always. Uh just wanted to check in, make sure you didn't have anything else to share?
Um Mayor and Council, I do have something to share. Um you're putting out a release tomorrow about this, but um you found a resolution, so unfortunately, we had a a pretty uh dangerous situation occurred this morning around six o'clock. It was a basically a kind of a home invasion burglary where a gun was fired, and um so we threw a very thorough investigation. Nobody was injured. Uh through a very thorough investigation, it's lasted all day. Ex-sergeant Sonnenberg is still taking, he's taking someone to jail right now, but um we were able to get two people arrested uh for that, so they're being charged with robbery, burglary, menacing, very serious offenses, so kind of a situation that uh these folks knew each other, as we ended up discovering, so there's not any sort of continued, you know, threat to the to the public or citizens, but definitely an unusual kind of situation for our town to have, so.
But we appreciate all your your work.
Greatly.
Yeah, really, thank you. Stay safe, everybody, stay.
So anyway, I just wanted to give a quick update from
Yeah.
that's been ongoing all day.
All right, well, thank you very much. Um Public Works, um one request uh for action, and uh do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the purchase of six sets of strobing light systems to enhance crosswalk visibility from LED lighting solutions in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-four from line item ten dash ten dash zero six zero nine one.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
A second.
Uh second from Kate, and any discussion? Our hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh before we move on to Ed, uh Paul, uh once again, thank you so much to you and your staff. I know how very thankless work can be sometimes, uh especially in the face of what really is like a once-in-a-decade kind of event where we received almost an entire, you know, year's worth of snow in one storm, so uh anyways, please, please.
It it, here's the deal, and this is for anybody who's listening to, it really doesn't matter what part of the city you start on. It doesn't matter, if you start on my street, the next street will be upset that you didn't start on their street, and we can, we can Monday day, what what do they call it, Monday?
Monday morning quarterback.
Yeah, that thing, we can do that as long as we want after a snowstorm. It's really never gonna be, everybody's happy all the time, but I think you guys did a great job, and it was a very difficult bunch of snow to move. I personally tried to do it just for a little bit, and it was backbreaking, so I appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, um Ed, uh staff report, uh thank you, sir, and we have uh one request for action regarding Matty Dam. Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve the, approve the proposal from JDA Engineering for bid services and construction administration concerning the rehabilitation improvement of Matty Dam, cost of thirty-nine thousand five hundred from line item fifty-one dash seventy-two dash seventy-three ten.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? Uh second from Janine, uh any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh Ed, thank you, just wanted to check in uh before we move on, make sure you didn't have anything else further tonight?
No, um everything's working really well. Um and speaking of emergency plans, I've actually got one in here.
I read that.
For the reservoir.
Yes.
Yes, the uh the inundation uh
Yeah, that's not gonna solve the snow problem.
Right, right. Thank you, and and Ed, refresh my memory, are we required to uh update that every five years or something like that?
Every year.
Oh, every year. Oh, okay. All right, glad I asked. All right, very good.
This one was pretty extensive, though. They changed some formatting and uh wanted additional information that um we didn't have in there for a while.
Gotcha.
Like the inundation map is actually really nice.
I like that addition, actually.
It's pretty cool what what they did, what what they, this one here, this one here is way forward.
Okay.
It's like high-res, and you can zoom in and it
Well.
can actually see things.
Bobby, dog, man, patient map was a good enough.
It's totally cool.
Well, thank you, uh thank you very much. Um I will uh move on to the uh uh mayor's section. And I do have one thing that was uh snuck into your uh back of your uh your packet here, I I think it was laid at everybody's uh uh seating area regarding the uh Opera House and the restoration. And the second page is just kind of the major hits that this building is taking, and one uh in particular is that the brick foundation is sinking, so uh this is going to be very, very costly. Uh we're not entertaining some of the more controversial things that were floated, like uh uh you know, the elevator situation. This is just saving of the structure and going for a grant uh to restore the structure. And I would uh like to have a motion, if uh council would so desire, to support this letter, uh supporting the grant. Yes.
John, no, it may need to change slightly. It's a first draft, so we might have to add a couple of small changes.
Well, uh and when you say small, it would be like, for example, uh a specific person, uh we know this is going to a state historic fund grant.
Yes.
And I'll give everybody a chance to
Can I ask a question? Is it to the, should I ask a question later? Make a motion first, I can't remember, but my question is, this is a privately owned building
Hmm.
in historic section of town, and we already know that we kind of all had concur that there was probably gonna be problems with the plan that they wanted to go forward with. If the building stayed just as it is, without any going forward on that plan, would restoration be necessary?
Oh, I I think it doesn't have to ruin the building, it's Yeah, the, there is some uh, that building's been kind of duct taped together over the years, and there's some structural issues that need to be addressed on the interior of the building, the just some of the structural, like on the levels of the building, and like the mercurial foundation sinking, and so if there wasn't any future like facade changes, that still need to come to COA process and all through that kind of thing, but this would just stabilize the building, so it doesn't have these more significant issues. There's like the beams cut and things like that.
Yeah, and I'll I'll just add another one on there. I was unaware, there was a fire there about five or six years ago. So now they're gonna have to uh double up uh some of the wooden uh structural supports as well.
Wow.
Um you know, I I uh
I was just curious, this is honestly in my twenty-something plus years, it's the first time I've seen the city asked to give a letter in support of a grant for a building. Is it the first time that you're aware of that? Uh not, not one of our buildings.
This is the first one I've written a letter.
For private, for a private person.
Yeah, we haven't actually had it. There's only been one other private grant. The the senior center got one last year, but this year there'll be two applications from Indian Hot Springs and from
Okay, I mean, I'm not against it, I'm just saying it's a precedent I hadn't seen before, so I wanted to
And and since there is not a motion written out, I will give it uh my very amateurish stab. But uh I would make a motion uh that the city of Idaho Springs uh supports the letter uh for uh the state historic fund grant to restore uh the Opera House in our downtown Minor Street. And uh do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh second from Scott, any further discussion?
I wanna chime in as somebody that's worked with them on HPRC and say that we have done, we've had probably six meetings, like six meetings with HPRC, work sessions with them. Um I don't think, like, while this, you're right, this is a private building, um but so is Indian Hot Springs.
But what we're suggesting with Indian Hot Springs is not a preservation um application, it is a designation application, which I think are entirely different things, but that's just
Would you give a letter to Indian Hot Springs?
Um I we essentially just did by my vote, saying, designating it a historic spot. What this would do, I think, is actually setting up this building to be designated a historic spot, which I'm not sure
It's already designated.
Well, it is because it's in an area.
No, no, it's actually one of the forty-six buildings.
In a design, in a historic area.
Our historic area is what it is, but there are individual buildings that are designated.
It's called a, it's a, it's a significantly contributing structure to the historic district, and one of the reasons it was made. Well, what they were asking for is just for us to support the grant application so that they could get the funds from the state, but they're eligible for those fun, for those funds because of the
The designation?
The designation, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One thing unique about this is their vision of trying to restore a building that's been changed over the years. It was the Mines Theater for years.
And then Bowling Alley, wasn't it?
No, no, no. But returning it to its original form, I think that's unique and kind of a neat idea for the historic preservation.
Well, I also think that they've run into things that, I mean, you guys know, old houses, old buildings, you run into stuff, and this is, like, if it's foundation, that's a huge building, that's
Yeah, it's huge.
It's a huge building, so
It's tied to everything around it.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, it's tied to everything around it, so if that thing falls, both, you know, the other side of it is in trouble.
I I'm not against it, I'm just, I'm very curious, because again, it's the first time I've ever heard of this, and so I went, and I also like to let people know, this isn't a common request by any stretch of the imagination.
No, no, I would totally support if other historic building owners said, hey, we're trying to restore this, or, you know, can we go get your support, yeah, if it's one of our forty-six buildings, because to me, our forty-six buildings are part of our
Oh, it's part of our marketing, yeah.
I would agree with you, yeah, I hundred percent supporting any one of them, forty-six.
So I just wanted to, like, we've talked a ton with them, they are very aware, like, of where we've had challenges, or where we've had questions and discussions, and they have been very responsive to whatever it is.
And I can speak to trying to renovate old buildings that's never within budget.
Yeah.
Your budget grows, so.
Yeah, no doubt.
All right, uh any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mayor Protem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh I had moved the city attorney uh towards the end because uh we were scheduled for an And I had moved city attorney towards the end because we were scheduled for an executive session and I just want to make sure we don't have anything outside of executive session.
I, I was about to ask, John told me he needed a couple of minutes to just get us into a exact session mode. Nothing further other than the new bathrooms look fantastic. I was up here at the beginning of the month and I don't think they were open yet. So I had to use the downstairs, but now, I mean, if you're downstairs, you might as well go upstairs.
Very fancy.
All right, well, very good. And Jonathan, no rush, but let me know when you're ready.